...of the Tuckton Borough meeting. We have a much larger crowd than we would normally have for a planning board meeting. So I just want to take a few seconds to go over a couple of things that are important. First of all, the exits are in the rear of the building and the side of the building. There are also two bathrooms through this door. The fire department has also brought, this may be a long meeting, some water which is in the cooler up here. And if anybody needs assistance for a reason, Adam and it looks like another piece of hot fire protection person is here as well. Many years ago when I attended my first planning board meeting, I went and nobody really bothered to explain how it works or what we do. So I've always remembered that and whenever we have a large application, I try to at least give everyone some knowledge of what we do and how it works and why it happens. So if no one minds, I will do that tonight. The planning board's role in the town is to basically write zoning, men zoning, which is later approved by the town at town meeting. And also to review applications that may require more review than could be given by the codes officer, say for a standard building permit for a home or a garage. Ninety percent of what we look at are subdivisions, boundary line adjustments, change of use, things like that. We do not have the power to change zoning. That power lies with the zoning board of appeals. Our job is basically to apply the nuts and bolts to zoning as it's written within the town. So tonight we're going to hear three applications. Two of them are fairly minor and should be fairly quick. I believe the majority of the people here are for the last application. The first two applications, history has shown us, will probably take somewhere between thirty minutes or so to go through, the two of them. So if anybody would like to take a walk for a little while or you know trouble sitting for a long period of time, please feel free to use it. A quick note about protocol and behavior. If anyone has a cellphone with them, which is probably likely, please put your cellphone on silent. Also, as far as behavior, we are all friends and neighbors here. And after this meeting, we will all be friends and neighbors again. So I expect everyone to act accordingly, using only yelling and screaming and such and so forth. We are better than that, we can do it. So before we get started, we will do a little bit of housekeeping. It's basically just approval of minutes. And then we will get to the first application. Procedure for that is pretty straightforward. We'll read the application, the information about it, the name, the tax map. We will assume jurisdiction over the application. The applicant will present what it is they would like to do. The board will ask some questions if necessary. And a public session will be opened about the application where people can ask questions of the applicant or to the board. Once that is finished, we will close the public session. The board will vote. It's a pretty straightforward process. Sometimes there's more information than the board can handle in one night. Data may be presented that we need to get a second opinion on, legal expert, environmental expert, who knows? It varies. If that happens, we will often continue the application to debate certain so that we can get legal opinions and decisions. There is a third concern tonight, which is the capacity of the building, which Adam was watching carefully in the rear. And it is his determination when the building has reached capacity. If that should happen, we will assume jurisdiction of the applications and then we will continue them to debate certain, or we may ask if people are here for one particular application, if some people would mind stepping outside for a while in such a social or project situation. So with that, does anybody have any questions about procedure or how things are going to work tonight or just general planning board questions? Okay.
So Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
We've reached capacity.
Okay.
So you know, this farm is, will continue to allow people to stand.
Yep.
But if we did too many more people, we're not going to be able to.
Then if you have any additional seats, please just make sure if people are available. Yes?
Yeah.
When, if you do choose to speak, please make sure you state your name and address when you speak. You do not need to be a voting citizen of the town of Tuckton Borough. With that, the first application, oh, sorry. With that, we need to do an approval of minutes from the July 11, 2019 planning board meeting. Anybody see? Do I have a motion to accept the minute? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. First up, we have Little Cricket Realty LLC, tax map 55-3-12, site plan review for a change of use, formal submission with public hearing. Just to come back around on this, this is actually what was moving on Technic Oil, which most people remember. Technic Oil moved a year ago, roughly. And there is a change of use which is actually less intensive than the original one, which is to be used as a landscaping excavation shop. With that...
Matt's name?
It's not, anybody know whose part it is?
It's a white Cherokee, wasn't it?
White Cherokee, anyone?
White Cherokee.
Yeah.
White Cherokee.
White Cherokee.
No, it's one.
It was so nervous. I think we can stop that. All right, Dan, it was much easier. Walk us through.
Six hours' worth of building with the building on the east. It's a major company, so it's something that's been made back.
Great. Any modifications to the exterior or armpit model that there is no such thing as?
We took out some of the trees, good.
Okay. Is it giving any outside storage materials or outside washing of machinery or anything like that? No? All right. Looks like the rain engine sucked air, it's blocked air, it's settled up here.
All of them, that was a problem.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on the board?
Please to represent the question. There wasn't any question.
So you're not taking a lot of vehicles?
Another thing, we have four guys down in the morning, they knew that they were going to do their job back.
Blown about ten percent of the way it used to be.
More activity around.
Does anybody have any questions on the board? I have a motion to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Matt, when somebody approaches you up there, can I turn around, speak up so we can get everything on the camera?
Absolutely.
Can't hear the conversation. Thank you.
We have also found the application to be complete. Can I have a motion to accept jurisdiction of the application? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public session. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Maris? Do I have a motion to close the public session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have any questions? That's pretty straightforward. Can I have a motion to approve the application as presented? All those in favor?
Aye.
I assure you, they're not all that fast. Next up tonight, we have Donald Winchester, M. Burger, and Camp Bellman, tax map 39-1-12, 39-1-13, boundary line adjustment, formal subdivision, and public hearing. Formal submission, most of them. We have reviewed the application and found it complete. Can I have a motion to assume jurisdiction over the application? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have we went on the survey?
No, we haven't.
All right. Mr. Burger, please come up. If you have a question, if you'd like me to answer.
It's pretty well negotiated. We've got both parties happy. Everybody's happy.
Everybody's happy?
I did speak to one daughter down on Struland Road. I sent her all the deeds and settlement agreements. Didn't get back. I assume he's happy as well.
By chance, we got most of Camp Bellman.
Generational as well.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Burger or Camp Bellman? Can I have a motion to open the public session? All those in favor?
Nine.
Does any member of the public have anything to add?
Hi, I checked for a fix in Shoreo. What exactly is happening? Because I had him in a letter and the letter was pretty bad.
Did you be able to see the survey? If you want to, you can come up here. A boundary line is moving, being moved by about thirteen feet. This is a new spot. Basically, the moving ground is here. And this was involved with a disregime that can help Mr. Burger just find it. So this is being, this is going to be. It gives me flexibility to ask for a slot. So this is being, this is going to be.
We're fine with it.
Okay.
Yep, great. Happy that that is. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who have questions about this application? I have a motion to close the public session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Key questions by members of the board? Can I have a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment as of late? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Congratulations. Okay. Next up is David Winchester, Donald Winchester, and John Winchester and C and R Hampshire Realty Trust LLC, tax map 40-2-1, twelve lot subdivision, formal submission, and public hearing. This is what I assume most people are here for. We have reviewed the application and the application was found to be complete. We also had, because it was anticipated that we would have this, we also had planning board counsel, which is Justin behind us, review the application and make sure. So with that, can I have a motion to assume jurisdiction of the application? All those in favor? With that... Excuse me for one minute, we need to do a small amount of housekeeping. Can I have a motion during the public? Can I have a motion by the board to seal the non-public meeting minutes that was held with council before the meeting as directed by, as recommended by us? Two-thirds majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm sorry about that.
Scott Frankl from the Hampshire Land Consultants. Good evening. Scott Frankl from the Hampshire Land Consultants. Good evening. I am Tom Sobelowski, the director of delineation and driving upon the site, as well as attorney Sullivan, India Opkins, Randy Owen, and Cindy Craft. I'll go through and speak about the project and then Tom will get up and speak about the driving aspects of it. And attorney Sullivan will fill in any gaps that we missed. What we're proposing is a twelve lot subdivision on an existing parcel that's 13.58 acres. As everybody knows, it has prime value. It's in the island conservation district, which lot side department is one acre and 150 feet of frontage. Currently on the site, there's a cottage, couple outfilled, a boathouse that hasn't been used in many years. The current utilities on site, there's an outhouse, there's a gray wire, and there's a utility line that runs into the site. Utility line has been inspected or reviewed by a professional since capacity is there and service is twelve lots. So, related to the proposed, what we're proposing, like I said, is twelve lots, all one acre or more. The lots actually range from one acre to 176 acres. All have one acre buckling. And all the lots require to have 150 feet of frontage on the lake as well. Some of the, one of the largest lot, which is one of these corner lots, has 350 feet of frontage. Test fits been performed, all suitable. And we show that within the plan set, meeting D E S requirements. We show a 75 foot well radius, which makes the D E S requirement a 4,000 square foot area, which is a requirement by D E S for settling suitability. On this plan, in front of me, the color plan, the brown is a potential house size and the green is an area that would be cleared around the house. Couple, talk about the permits that may be or may not be required for this or state subdivision approval to be required. I typically don't submit that until after for a public meeting, just in case for some changes. And then later down the road, when the lots are going to be developed, they may need a shoreline permit as well potentially, buckling. But there are spaces on each lot to have a dock put in without impacting the weapons. But the dock permit could also be another requirement. We don't fall under the jurisdiction of A O T because it's drawing, it's actually 50,000 square foot of contiguous disturbance. And at this point, we're not proposing any disturbance, we're proposing just a subdivision. One of the comments that I've heard is about parking on the inland. And as I understand, there is a public parking space or parking lot mark from where we're proposing subdivision, which is right here. And this plan kind of represents, this represents everything that's existing and has lot prime value, but we'll add it to the subdivision. At this island, we're trying to know where the Tom Sobelowski, the dock, free to take out the weapons and those who did work.
My name is Tom Sobelowski. I work for my own company, T E S Environmental Consultants. I'm certified beginner weapon scientist and certified beginner soil scientist. On November 2 of 2018, I delineated weapons on the island. In general, the island is forested, a mix of hardwoods and greens. The weapons I found were mostly contiguous with the shoreline. They came in a little bit on the old line ground adjacent to the lake. There were a couple of small pockets above that that had ground that were discharged that qualify as jurisdictional weapons as well. Minimal weapons include any streams or thermal pools, which are considered to be special aquatic habitats that contain specialized wildlife that require temporary surface waters. In general, all the wetlands as well are forested with the fairly dense shrub under story holy green soils, which have basically mineral material to within the nature to the surface and a very thin organic matter on the top of that. And I've found or observed no rare species of vegetation that would be considered to require any kind of preservation or interest to the natural area of here. And overall, are there any questions specific to weapons, weapon permitting, shoreline permitting that I might answer at some point? Feel free to ask that of me or Scott. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Sullivan, attorney down in the best area of the area. I just want to go over some of the points I've seen raised in the various letters that were submitted to the planning board, that were all bearing good concerns. I just want to go over. The first thing I want to point out however, this is private land. There's no restrictions other than what the government imposes. There's no overlay of permitting or anything of any type of activities we're doing. But there's zoning requirements, there's going to be shoreline protection requirements, maybe able to, you know, things of 50,000 feet in this area of disturb, etc. So just want to keep that in mind, this is private land. Do any of all of this, something to the cattle regulation, whatever state, kind of everybody from their bodies to impact on this. There's a question about boat traffic. I drove up here, listening to a little bit of public dock here. And I don't want it to sound like cows, but I just want to be realistic. Okay, it's a big lake. There are a lot of boats. And they come from all over the place. Sometimes it's rafting in this area, sometimes it's not. But all blocks is not going to add an appreciable amount of loading activity in this area. In juxtaposition against all the others that may have a right to come up through this today. Same reason, not to get any impact on the waterfall, okay? There'll be state roof subject systems, there'll be on-site wells, you know, loading activity is right lane as well as any discharge of load, no different than any place else. We know the previous type of load, blue, people, people who bear the top of notice for the weather. Remember 2018, I believe, center of the board indicated, even though there, the rescue saw a potential investing spot, we're not, did, so any loads actually left. The load is a threatened species in the area, but it's not an endangered species, okay? The low load's actually been enough to make you work there. An increase in the blue population throughout the area. There was science, science here, they park us out there on the island last year or something like that, but they come over at a later time. But most of the islands are all pretty overgrown. I mean, 100 years ago, we were cleared for farm, grazing animals, sheep, and now it's pretty brush. There is the old cottage, which is going to be saved. Other than that, there's not any archaeological impact or nothing like that. As long as you know watch the island, it's going to stay there. And again, I've checked the national, there are only seven spots in Tuckton Borough. This is not one of them, no application to make. Scott, would you check on that?
No, there is, we are.
There's no historical preservation, impact at all. Again, parking, you're still parking, there is parking on the wing, there is available. Grand traffic, all part of many, you have those. You're back in the inferno, you know, one of your boat, you drop, you'll park, you'll park available. Same with block, I think there are eleven, right now there are eleven slips available in the median area for sale. There's nothing to rent. So in terms of, if you, Phil, we're hoping to speak to that, if you have a question. I'm not that clear on the air, but I can be addressed. Town beach is far enough away to see any of the impact on beach areas. Noise, light pollution. There could be 12 homes someday, may not be any day soon, but someday there may be 12 homes. And if we generate no more noise and no more light than anybody else's home, okay? In the area or zone that is allowed. So I'm going to consider it, don't be huge, large constant practices every day, just going to be beautiful looking and enjoying the look. Safety, growing safety stores, kayakers, can do this. There are now, there's regulation of boat speeds. Everybody, both the sobering and the boat, the right owners, everybody's aware of that. It isn't a little smaller area, I don't see any things that would impact this recently with people on boat. In terms of the electrical power, I think Fair Island now has the same cable size that exists with Farm Island, because they down, 140, I think it's on there. So the board now is very interested. It's not in the 100 year plus zone. Okay, it's going to be no viable impact, okay? Everything can be built, so whatever regulations, threat, insurance, building setbacks, proper safety systems. And again, as needed, and when the time arises, proper action is going to be made from the other governmental regulations, bodies reviewing any type of construction activity, whether it's a dock or a house, whatever. So it's going to be further oversight after this, no army or activities or necessity for it. So, I mean, what do we have, really? What do we have? We're privately on land, okay? What is being proposed is what's allowed to be proposed. As Scott pointed out, it meets all the criteria for those lots. There's not even a need for a variance or a waiver. It's a plain vanilla thing. A lot of you folks, many of you folks, just don't want it, you know, it's not my back. I get that, I get that. But it's allowed. As the chairman pointed out, they don't link the law, okay? They apply the facts to the law and a lot of the facts. And law and the facts, if they have a rule of subdivision here, it will be done with as such minimal impact as the law imposes, okay? People just like you, who perhaps have, you know, island properties, you're not going to be wanting, you're just going to respect the island, you're going to enjoy the house you have, that's all this has to do. Okay, yeah, there's blah blah. Look at Chase Island, you have 29. I know the camp is next door. And law and the facts, we have a rule of subdivision here. It will be done with as such minimal impact as the law imposes, okay? People just like you, who perhaps have, you know, island properties. You're not going to be wanting, you're just going to respect the island, you're going to enjoy the house you have, that's all this has to do. Yeah, there's blah blah. Look at Chase Island, you have twenty-nine. I know the camp is next door. I know they want to keep it, the whole island rusted. Again, it'll all be cows, but the camp doesn't own the whole island. You know, only those portion. What is owned by the game, owned by the business now, it's not paid for. So.
Can you give us some more information?
I can't.
Can you give us more information about the campus?
The power. Randy, do you want to talk about power?
Yeah, I can. I, um.
So you can shut the fan off? So you mentioned the cable size. Do we know, I have several concerns about it. One, the condition of the cable, the age of the cable, the curlys of the cable, where the cable runs. And my concern is, if I remember correctly, it runs through the shallow water there between what would be the King Davis property and Farm Island. And I don't know where that cable was put in. And my concern is, one, we have had twelve lots, which are going to require 200 amps each. We're almost all going to be pumped septic certainly considering the soil. And also, oh, a guy drives through there with a boat, bangs that cable, that old cable, and we start getting some stray voltage floating around. It could get, you know, quite exciting quickly, so. Do we have that information?
Randy has it.
Yeah, I do. I spoke with Mark Taylor at NOKA. And the, over, the aerial cables were used in, in about, I guess it was around 1938, they were fifteen years old. A sailboat went through what was called the Holm Mall. And the sailboat mass struck it. So at that point, which is about thirty-six, thirty-eight years ago, all of the cables that were aerial went underground. So this cable was installed in kind, like the one that is on Bear Island. Bear Island actually has two. One of them has 140 ounces on it. Same cable, same spec, same vintage. Now, if the cable ever fails there or this one, and this one fires the man, it would just be changed in kind or updated.
So is the cable being maintained by the Hampshire Electric or is it by the property?
I believe they put it in, they put it in, however, it was clear to me that if it got changed, I would have that burden. And within the burden, I would have to put concrete shielding around the shoreline. And then when the water was deeper, it was a direct burial or a direct submerged cable. You can drive along and see it. You can see it between the hole and wall. You can see it going from Devens to Cow. You can see it, you know, going all directions. It goes, you know, one that goes to Cow Island goes across Little Bear and then it goes across Little Bear. And it used to go aerial over both, the whole mall and the space between Devens, but now it's all in the water. And we swam around it for years and then over it, aside it and everything. It's shielded and protected. It was right near, it was between the Williams and the cars going onto Cow Island. They were my best friends and swam right around it, snuggled around it. I'm sure if it's, if it's good enough for 140 ounces, I don't think twelve is going to be a problem.
Do you take it any day? Not yet, I'm sorry, the public session hasn't. Could you show us on a map where the weapons were found on that?
This is the best representation of it. All the green area is upwind, what we were proposing to be all wooded at the end, the houses were built. And light green would be an area around the house, clear for a house. As you see these little fingers coming in from pockets internally, those are the weapons that were found or delineated and located. There's various places around the island.
And as you, I'm sorry, as you went around the island, did you find anything world predonias or?
No small world predonia, no other rare plants that I saw. And very little in the way of wildlife. I'm sure that there are visitors to the island of various types of deer. I can swim there and walk over the ice in the wintertime. Didn't see a lot of sign of wildlife there at that time. I'm aware that the Moon Preservation Committee had done a survey in the Sunday late last year. Found potentially suitable habitat on the east side of the island, the Lee of the Wind. They did not observe any activity out there. They've been doing surveys, I believe, since the 1970s and haven't found a lot of them missing. And certainly eagles are everywhere these days. They could pick any pine tree to boost in to look down and see if they could get a fish out of the water. I ditch the lake regularly during the summer and the fall. And many lakes around the state, and there are eagles everywhere now. I've found them on Ninety Acre Ponds in Hopkins and I find them on Merrimack River in Boe. Lake Massabeesick in Manchester, Auburn. And they spend winters in certain places, whether it's flowing water, open water for those winter months. They spend the summers up here. They raise their young in specific locations, known nesting areas. Those are the areas that the Hampshire Fish and Game is most interested in protecting. And to my knowledge, it's not a nesting location right here, but certainly they're bold, they fly, they go everywhere. And they're just beautiful things to see all the time in the woods or in the lakes and fields. And it's part of our wildlife heritage restored to this area.
And Scott, as far as the weapons go, lot two, yeah, another, so 1.138 is one. So is it safe to say that you cannot use weapons as part of the area?
Right, yeah.
So 1.138 could be pretty much what the simple weapons, yeah? Is that how you do that?
Yeah. Yeah, which lot, actually?
Two dash eleven.
So, yeah, there's, we have an upwind calculation on one of the plans in the plan set. So if it's 1.13, chances are that probably that one or 1.13 is that area one.
Okay, so you have about three properties that, four properties that are significant. This, this one you have at eight. So all your lots seed right now, the requirements to cover.
Right. The ones, there's a couple, I think, that are one acre that don't have any weapons. They go right into the water, no weapon. The rest of them, because we have thirteen point, thirteen point eighty-eight there or so, so there's twelve lots. So there's some slack in there on different lots. One of the bigger lots that we did leave was the cottage lot, which is 1.6 acres, six six acres. And that was just because of the nature of it and getting it connected to the water.
Any other weapons? Let me ask another question. Let me, can you give me a professional opinion on the test pit data? Where do you see it? Do you see it was very good, good, dismayed?
It was, it was all over. It was not all over the place, but we ran from sixteen inches seasonal high water table up in this area. And then it went up to thirty-two in different places and everything in between. Better soils are along here, you know, the lower seasonal high water table was up here. And this was rocky, but we had good seasonal high water table that meet the state standard.
That meets the state standard height. So what do you envision the septic systems here? What type of septic?
So I always promote the Enviro Septic advance. It's a non, it doesn't create a big mound. And it's a proven product that's been, there's a lot more that are out there now. Clean Solutions and different things like that, that if somebody's on the island, they want a very environmentally sensitive system, they can do a Clean Solution system, which is even smaller. So there's a lot of variety of systems out there, but I don't see anybody building so many pipe out there, system, because of the four foot separation, it would create a big mound and disturb us.
So you want to build a two and a half?
Enviro Septic, you can go down to two feet, you do a lot.
Okay. Another question I wanted to ask you a little bit, on the Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau, one that was done. How's it work?
So what you do is you go to the GIS website, you go in and you give them the area of what you want evaluated. So what I did is Prime Island, I did a bunch of areas around us too. But Prime Island, I did it three times, just to prove myself to myself. And there was no impacts at all registered with the Hampshire or the National Heritage Bureau. You look at Chase Island, there's potential impact. I didn't get the report because I wasn't doing that. I just wanted to see if there was any impacts anywhere else around. And Prime Island is one that didn't have any impacts further.
So you wouldn't put it, you draw it out, is it on map?
Well, you can either import shape files or you can go in there actually with a draw coming out, which is what I do. And you just draw a line around the area you want evaluated. And then it pulls the data, whatever data they have.
So that?
Information is on reports that have been given to the general public. I assume that's how they get them. So, yeah.
Report it. All right, he has the report.
There was nothing. Nothing. And then if something does come up, you have to send in $25, you have to report, go up, look through the file and see what it is. If we were doing something on Chase Island, we would have had to do that, submit a, well, actually, we didn't have to do the NHB report. We did it just to make sure we didn't have any impacts, because we're not proposing any impacts that require that report yet. But we did it and there was no impact. But if there was impacts, we have to go, and they actually have paper files you have to go through, see what the impact was. It can be a nesting site, it can be, it can be a bunch of different.
The report that you, the National Heritage Bureau, the second paragraph says a negative result does not mean that a sensitive species is not present. They seem to be saying here, our data can only tell you known occurrences. Many areas have never been surveyed or avoided survey for certain species. This seems to indicate an onsite survey with provided better information and what species and communities are indeed present. You might not have to, but it seems like it might be good idea.
And I think with the support of the Moon Preservation Committee too, that letter stating that was no loom present. I think we went as far as we really had to, or we went over and above actually what we had to for this application to prove that we're not, you know, there's nothing that, that, an act of heritage, you know, has an impact or potential impact.
And I would imagine the service on this, kind of walk over the design on the board.
Right, Tom went back and forth along the whole, I believe.
Yes, and if I may just elaborate a little bit on the Natural Heritage Bureau review process. What happens if there is a known occurrence of a rare or endangered species or an exemplary natural community, is their exact terminology, in the area? They look within a one mile radius of that. For eagles specifically, they're looking for nesting habitat, because that is the critical feature that required, that is required for that population to go forward. Same with the looms, they're looking for loom nesting sites. And they require isolated areas without predators, where it's not too high off the water, because they do not, they walk very poorly on land. So they need to have a very specific area to nest in. Although they say by the Moon Preservation Committee, there may be potential nesting areas on the eastern side of the island. That very little may be, but because they have not selected those areas, a loom hasn't gone and nested there, there may be some flaw there that just isn't appropriate for that species to nest in. Perhaps the water's too shallow, perhaps there's some disturbance. Likely not the case in this instance, but for some reason they're not there. If a species is found, if it's a species of wildlife, the applicant has to approach the Hampshire Fish and Game Commission. And they do a review of the project. They look at the files for the known species that is in the area. And they make a determination at the State Fish and Game Department as to whether or not there's a potential impact posed by the project to that rare species. And if there's a rare plant there, the Natural Heritage Bureau, the one who does all the administration for that, would ask you to perform a survey on the sites and look for a rare species. All of that Natural Heritage Bureau review is done when a state permit application goes in, whether it's a weapons permit application, shoreline permit application, or an alteration of training permission application. So those are in the future, and those studies or those investigations would be performed at such time when those projects go forward, whether they're a dock installation or a shoreline application for a house.
Either your plus one acre lot slots are, compared to what we have today, you know, lots of lots.
Right.
The most.
And that's a good comparison between the two islands.
Yeah, the concern on septic there is impact. With your fancy viral, the test pits are good. Low impact.
And I also did a quick calculation of lot loading. They all will take, they take the whole area, take the well area out of it and do that lot loading calculation. All of them will be suitable for, for better, if that's what somebody, and that's how DES will look at it.
Thank you.
Our subdivision regulations require that utilities be buried if possible. When you were doing your test pits, did you see anything that would make that a giant rock hole?
No. In the lower southern end here, it was rocky, but we were able to get test pits down. I can't remember the depth, we were able to get down to a depth of four feet or so or more, or maybe ajar. If the utilities have a carrier.
Okay, so we're going to end the public session shortly. Obviously, there's a lot of people here, many of them would like to speak, and everybody is going to get the chance to speak. So I just ask that you be conscientious of the people behind you and be to the point, for lack of a better term. So with that, can I have a motion to open the public session? So who, are those included?
Aye.
Okay, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I am going to offer it to a butterer's first, just since this is the largest impact and that is only one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Reins, for the record, from Whitecomb Survey and Engineering. And I was hired by YMCA Camp Belknap to do a peer review of the application for compliance with the state and the town regulations. And so I have prepared this review. I would say at the outset, I reviewed reduced versions of the plans that were submitted. They were taken by a cell phone, so I didn't necessarily see the exact outside limits of the plan, but I, from border to border. But I reviewed EC1, which was sheet two of five, PC1, which was sheet three of five, plus two other sheets that were blowups of, in two sections of PC1, which were sheets four of five and five of five, is my assumption. They, I, after reviewing those plans, I relied the March 2018 zoning, which, and the December 2015 subdivision regulations is what I was comparing them to. Those are the two latest ones on the town's website. I reviewed the FEMA flood maps from their map service center. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Administrative Rules, ENVWQ 1000. Administrative Rules for Licensed Land Surveyors, 100 to 500. And relied on my experience as a licensed professional engineer, a licensed land surveyor, and a designer of subsurface sewage disposal systems. Been doing that since the seventies. And I discovered some deficiencies and inconsistencies with the town and state regulations that I thought the board should be aware of and provide the opportunity for the applicant to respond to them. The first was that the topography on the plans made no reference to the datum, the vertical datum, and no explanation of how it was generated. And this is important because the section 3.3.3. And this is important because the section 3.3.1C of the subdivision regulations requires that boundaries be shown, and the shoreline on islands is the boundary. And the boundary, the vertical datum for Lake Winnipesaukee is tied to NGVD 1929, and the notes on the plan said that it was surveyed in March 14th and 15th of 2019, and so I looked at the dam elevations, and found that the lake at that time, on the 14th, was 502.92, and on the 15th, 509.91, so it was about almost a foot and a half low. So what that means is, when the, at the, the actual boundary is, the water would be higher, so the island would be smaller, so there's less area to be subdivided. So it may be, depending on the abrupt nature of the shoreline, or whether it's gentle, so in the areas of the wetlands, it's surely going to reduce. If there's a steeper shoreline, it may not have a material difference, but nonetheless, the administrative rules that govern licensed land surveyors say for natural features such as shorelines, you're supposed to accurately locate those within plus or minus a half a foot. So 1.4 feet would be outside of that norm. The second thing is, general note nine on the plan said that there was no flood plain, and that's, that's false. If you look at one of the documents that I submitted, was a firm map, which is generated from the flood insurance map, and it clearly shows that the entire westerly, northerly, and a portion of the easterly shoreline are below 506 elevation, which is the flood elevation. And not to get too deep into the weeds, but you need to for your knowledge, the flood elevation is in a vertical datum of 1988, the lake boundary is 1929. The significance is that the 88 datum is actually a half a foot lower than the 29 datum. So the benchmarks on the two utility poles in the southeast corner, those are 1929 datum. I confirmed that with DUCET surveying, who-
Jim, why is it lower?
Because of the, it's really getting into the weeds, the geoid model of the earth. It became, with GPS and everything else, it became much more, Earth, you know, yeah, geeks, the geekier than I am, decided the geoid needed to change, and so in this area, it's a half a foot lower. So what that means is the benchmarks that are on the two utility poles down here that were identified on the plans I reviewed, were identical to the ones on the DUCET survey that, in 2010 subdivided this, and I confirmed with built in set today that those were 1929 datum. So that, to me, implies the topography is 29 datum, so if it's a half a foot lower, that means the flood elevation is actually going to be higher, so it's, it's clearly going to be on here, because his 1929 topo shows plenty of areas that are below 506, which is flood elevation, so that's going to be coming on these lots. So at a minimum, I would recommend that the planning board require that the shoreline be mapped to 504.32, using elevation NGVD 29 to correct, to depict the correct boundary so that you have an accurate area from which to subdivide. I noticed also, lot two dash 10 has a straight line dimension of 145.94 feet, where zoning requires 150, measured in 50-foot increments. Because I was working from a reduced version, I, I can't, I can't completely dispute that that would meet that standard, but I think the planning board should have the applicant demonstrate that it clearly meets that. Additionally, ENVWQ 1000 505 requires newly created lots be wide enough to support 150-foot well radius wholly on the lot. And clearly, if the lot is only 145 feet wide, it's going to have to spill over, so that's contrary to the administrative rules, and your regulations say you have to adhere to the administrative rules, so it seems to be a deficiency there. The other thing, as was pointed out, the test pit showed seasonal high water tables between 16 and 32 inches. That's considered a group three soil, and the minimum lot size for a group three soil on a slope from zero to eight percent is 48,000 square feet, and most of these lots are less than 48,000 square feet. As soon as the slope increases above eight percent, 15 percent, the minimum lot size is 53,000 square feet, and there are a number of areas on this property based on the topography that exceed 15 percent. So I believe that there, there are too many lots being proposed based on the requirements, because lots two-three through two-nine, two-twelve, and two-thirteen are less than 48,000 square feet, and they'll shrink when the corrected shoreline is actually mapped, and so that would be a violation of section 4.2.3 and 4.3 of the subdivision regulations. So a reduction in the number of lots would seem appropriate. And the last thing, as pointed out, section 4.4.16 of your subdivision regulations requires easements be shown. Now, the DUCET plan from 2010, they referenced a recorded easement for the existing line. The submitted plans show the power lines, but they make no reference to it, to its width, its recording information. And clearly, once these new lots are created, the power line comes up and goes over here, all of these people are going to want power. Somehow, an easement needs to be granted to those lots to be able to get that power. Depending on its width, its location, that could impact where proposed septics are going to go. If they aerially, if it was all above ground, even though your regulations suggest underground, there are certain separation requirements, so the power, power companies get to approve, you know, if you went to put a mounted system under it, that might violate their, their aerial separation, so. I think it's important that that be included in the application, therefore, I think it's important the DES know where those are going to be, I think the town should know, and clearly buyers who are going to be purchasing these should understand those. Those were items that I, that I observed, I submitted this document for you all to look at, and if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Would you like, before we go to everyone else, to respond to any of that, or would you-
I'm actually like, I'm actually, if you change this, you would like that, absolutely. You would work the plans, and-
Absolutely.
As I understand, it's going to be depending on you.
Thanks. Yes. Is that, absolutely. Just state who you are, or?
My name is Cindy Bausias, I'm a certified wetland scientist, a certified soil scientist, and I'm certified professional erosion, sediment control. I've been retained by Camp Belknap to kind of do an overall environmental review of the island, and I do have a report, only five properties right now to give out if you would mind if I can. What I'm doing, what I did as part of this review is, I actually went on the island and walked along the boundary line, and took a look at the general overlying of the island, which is general ecology. I also then-
Did you have permission to go on there?
Yeah, I went on Camp Belknap from the old, that's why I just said I walked along the property boundary. So as I walked along the boundary, I made observations for both wildlife, habitat, vegetation, lake, potential other items out there that might be of importance. And then I went back, and I looked at all the remote sense data there was, including doing an NHB check as well. And then I took the subdivision plans and looked closely at them. So I don't, I'm not going to read my whole report, it's very hot in here, and a lot of people want to talk, but in general, I just want to talk a little bit about the ecology of the island. It is mixed hardwoods and mixed evergreen. The northern side of the island, especially the northeast, has a very thick cover of hemlock, and provides great deer yard habitat. While I was on the island, we did see plenty of deer droppings, and we also scared up a new born fallling. So deer are reproducing on the island, and they are using it, probably come out in winter or swim out, but they are still using it. We also took a boat tour around the island several times, and what really clocked out at us was the, what we call the cove, located in the northeastern section. That cove is protected mainly, you don't see a lot of boat traffic there, there is no wind, it's protected from wind, and it's protected and sheltered by a thick forest cover, and the wetland is highlighted on the plan. There's actually a thick scrub shaw wetland with a good edge of emergent plants which are potential loom habitat. So far, you know, according to everybody that specified, there's been no nest found, but the potential exists because of that habitat type. But more importantly, is it's a little oasis on this island. The other thing I looked at very closely was the soils, and the soil test pit data. Similar to some of the conclusion that Jim found, I actually, I'm a soil scientist, so I looked right at it, and a lot of the test pits were identified as a soil conflict, Hennecker, Gloucester. A test pit can't be two soils, it can be only one, so you have to classify that soil with that soil type in that lot. Based on the soil data itself, Hennecker and Gloucester are actually well-drained soils. That means the water table's above 40 inches, yet every test pit had water table 30 inches and below, to 16 inches. That would put the entire, every single soil test pit was moderately well-drained, meaning that water table was close to the surface, it was metacomic soils, and every test pit recorded a pan. Also, if you look closer at the test pits, in this area right here, they recorded refusal at 50 inches. Now, some of it could be the large boulders, but I, I think that rock outcrops like to present here. And the way I kind of ascertained that was, if you do come around the island, and anybody that's local can see a big, large ledge outcrop, right in the shallow water right there. I believe that runs the ridge just like this over here. So, why is that important? When you're looking at all the boulders, the stones, the ledge, the pan, when you go to construction in this type of area, and there were some steep slopes based on the topo, you have a potential for water quality issues. So my suggestion in my report, in reviewing this application as a planning board, is it's your job to protect water quality, and you might want to look at having sediment erosion control plans for every single lot, whether they go to construction one at a time or all of the time, I feel that it's extremely important here, because the island ecology itself has been identified in your own master plan, is extremely important for the town to handle wildlife and vegetation. In addition, I would suggest that you maybe ask for cutting plants within those lots. Based on the soil type, these lots are going to need to be bigger to meet state subdivision. So I suggest that we do some, some cutting plans that provide cover and maintain the island integrity. When I was out here, I could easily see water from where I was right along this boundary line, on both sides. Imagine a house lot, and it passes right underneath the state line shoreline to conduct some significant cutting. So imagine the cutting that takes place here, and over 150 feet away from the 4.32 line, you're allowed to cut whatever. So that essentially will take this whole center of the island, and each individual lot owner has a right, if this is a subdivision, building individual lot, to cut that. You change the island ecology forever, Gloucester. That being said, there are plenty of things as a planning board that you can do to help negate that or reduce the environmental potential environmental impact. And one last thing, I was, I was looking at, applicable state laws and rules, naturally, every single lot here will need to have a shoreline permit. But what that means is, after these lots are official, that every single lot can have a dock, can have a beach, they can have some kind of retaining lot, they can have walkways, they can have accessory structures, in addition to the home and the shed that's outside of the shoreline protection zone, and anything else that's on there. So when you start looking at it as a whole, okay, you, you in the beginning can put in some steps in here that negate what can end as an environmentally impacted subdivision. In addition, you just reminded me on there, I also hold the New Hampshire Fishing Game Wildlife Action Plan, and as you see, the island and the waters around it are some of the highest ranked habitat in the state. Why? Because it is potential loom habitat. They're not there right now, but this area in the cove had great fishing potential, we spotted a lot of days, young fish, so looms can come in here in feet, they might not nest here, but they definitely feed it. So the additional boat traffic generated by everything here, especially the four lots that line on the cove, are a concern, because it will change the whole area of the cove in, from being something of ecological significance, to basically just another area, docks, beaches, and there we go, structure. I could go on some more, but I wanted to just mainly go over some of the highlights of the report. The report is a little bit more coherent and structured, with maps and data, including all the test pit, tan pictures from the day we went out on the island and saw them.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. I think it's worth noting, just so that everyone is aware, that in almost every case of a subdivision, we do give a independent third-party review, the board does. So not only is this been reviewed by Whitecomb Survey, but in almost every case, the board has a third-party engineering firm review everything to make sure it's done actively. These are very complicated, as you can see, issues, and obviously, general agents and technicals.
I think in the end, I think it's a matter of density, and putting in a number of items like a cutting plan and sediment erosion control in lots. Those steps will help negate a lot of the environmental impact that can potentially have there in the subdivision as it's worked. Thanks.
Thank you. Does everyone feel okay, or would anyone like to take a brief recess?
No.
Five minutes. Is everyone's okay? All right, who's next?
I'm sorry, let your hand up there. Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Craig Starble, and my wife and I have owned 15 Winney Shores Road and 25 Winney Shores Road, and I'm the president of the Winney Shores Association. Been in that area for 49 years, and here representing myself, as well as the association. I am the lucky owner of easement, the electric easement that goes up to the, up to farm lands, so I have some perspective on that alone, not a electrician, any means, or a engineer. My wife and I have owned the property since 2006, and, like I said, we've been in the area for quite some time. According to the deed, there's an electrical and phone service easement to the property, granted back in 1940. With the proposed subdivision, concerned about the impact of the easement originally intended for one island property being expanded to encompass the service for all properties, which we're talking about that tonight. Our property is fully developed and access to the shore for construction would impact that property and our privacy. My questions to you are, what, you know, what's the proposed subdivision, what would the length of the construction be, what season would it take? And given the age and expectancy of that line, there's been no upgrades, updates, and I've had no contact about that easement since we've been there, and talking to the previous homeowners- And talking to the previous homeowners, they had no contact about that. I've been in the bay long enough to remember the telephone lines and lines that went across the bay that were taken down, you know, twenty-five years ago or so. But to my knowledge, that electricity has not been serviced and it's not looking like today. I'd like to, I'd like to understand sort of like would that electrical update require dredging of the bay? There's a, it's a four-foot deep bay there at the deepest, it's a non-navigable part of the, part of the bay. Boats aren't supposed to go through there, boats that do go through there oftentimes hit rocks. And I'm worried that in order to satisfy cable, in today's world, the cable, internet, phone service and electricity, there would have to be more dredging, more work done to actually lay that cable appropriately. Not to mention that the impact to the shoreline. We've talked a lot tonight about the impact to the island habitat, but there's also going to be a lot of impact to the mainland shoreline. We're concerned that, you know, the board has, has to look at, you may have mentioned that, you know, the local state and federal departments will be, will be as a report come through. We believe this should happen prior to, you know, approval of subdivision, at least the pre-planning part of it, at least the approvals by the utility companies. I'm doubtful that the, that that pipe can handle a twelve-property, twelve-property subdivision. So, we're not the only ones impacted by it. So, this easement is on the shoreline, we have neighbors who will be impacted by any reconstruction of that area. I want to make sure that that's properly monitored, there would have to be work done on my property. I bought the property fully knowing that I had that easement on there, but the reality is, is that I want to make sure that there's some observation, some monitoring of that as it goes forward. We've talked a lot about the wildlife. I can tell you from personal observation, there are a lot of loons in that area. They may not be nesting, but there's a lot of loons in that area that I see daily. There are bears, there are deer. I see deer swimming to the island, I see deer walking to down in the wintertime. Saw a heron last week and not to mention all the fish that the previous speaker mentioned that are available in that area. So, in my mind, there's a significant amount of questions still, it's a vast amount of unknowns, it is a complicated issue, I agree. I respect the request that you consider and answer all these questions prior to this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Paul Johnson. My wife and I built a home next to Red Gate in Nineteen Mile Bay forty years ago. Forty years ago, we used the water from, from the lake to drink and use it for household purposes. It's changed drastically over the years. My point is not about that. I will say there's an eagle right now across from the yellow boathouse that's been there all this year. So, my, my biggest concern that I, that I have is, last year, I, I play at Kingswood Golf Club a lot on the weekends and I was driving down past Pac Two Thousand and I always come in because I know there's a lot of traffic there about thirty miles an hour. And on every weekend so far, last year, this year, the place is packed with trailers behind trucks. And last year, I almost killed a kid who would have been four or five years old who ran out in front of, between one of the trailers and one of the trucks he was parked behind. And I would, if I hadn't been conscious of all that activity, I would have killed that young man. And I mean, I think that there's a huge issue to take, concern about where these people are from part. If you look any weekend in the, in the trailer area that's been built, it's packed. And so, the police have really got to do something too with what we have currently, let alone this additional twelve-homes. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Wilkins, I'm a resident of El Pointe up in the, up in the deck. And I'd like to speak to those who aren't here to speak for themselves. And those would be the Native Americans who were here, here four hundred years ago, who we think came three or four thousand years ago. The Abenaki, they were a subset of the Algonkin tribe and they were a peaceful group. And they lived in this area. Mr. Chester Price in nineteen fifty-six made a map for the state called Indian Trails. And it's a clear Indian trail from, basically follows Route One oh nine from Wolfboro up to Multenboro. And he shows where the encampments were and there was an encampment right in the area of Nineteen Mile Bay. Now, as regards Farm Island, it was not always an island. It only became an island in the eighteen sixties when the dam was built, the lake port, which raised the water level five or six feet. And so, the land bridge that the Abenaki would use to get to that, to get to that peninsula, that piece of land, became not, not navigable long after they were gone. Now, the Abenaki survived by fishing, protein from the fish and by hunting, you know, the animals in the woods, deer and other small animals. They absolutely had fishing camps out there. Camp Belknap retained an archaeologist by the name of Virginia Bunker, PhD in archaeological research, who visited the Belknap portion of the island and concluded that this is a significant archaeological site, that there are very likely terrestrial and subterrrestrial artifacts which would tell us more about who the Abenaki were, how they lived. We do know that they were peaceful sort, when the warriors from the west would come in, they would sort of disappear into the hills. When the warriors would leave, they'd come back to the lakes. Perhaps you can learn something about how to be peaceful with one another. That would be something for a remark, but the Virginia believes there are substantial artifacts out there and in fact believes it should be designated an historical site for this reason. So, the request is that the planning board would consider having a qualified archaeologist, look at the other thirteen acres, the Belknap people obviously the only board that the property they own, and see what might be out there. I mean, who knows? It could be Indian burial grounds, we know there are artifacts around of all sorts that we can learn from these people, so we should take that opportunity. So, that would be a request to the board to consider that. As regards to the loons, Mr. John Conley, senior biologist at the Loon Preservation Committee who got to here tonight, he submitted a letter for the record saying that the short, there's sufficiently much shoreline that really the board should consider ways to enhance the loon population. As everyone in this room knows, the loon population darn near died off and through careful management, it's been brought back, but there's still are not enough loons every year frankly. And that's a tremendous asset to the lake and to the state and to the larval local economy. So, I will submit Mr. Conley's letter to you for the, for the record to take a hard look at what such effects you might consider to see that future nesting loons will be duly protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Bill Perkins, I live in Wolfboro. And I've been coming here since nineteen fifty-one as a camper at Camp Belknap. I'm a camper through Division Head for fourteen years. And I was proudly invited to join the Board of Directors two times. I'm still serving. I've been a past vice chair of the board, as was John Wilkins as chairman. And so, my family goes back to nineteen twenty-eight when my fourth generation begins at Camp Belknap when my dad first attended. And we have campers there today. I'd like to read some information that we've prepared and if I may, I'd like to go ahead with that. When Camp Belknap was buying their seven and a half acres of Farm Island in two thousand ten, it was the board and I was on the board of the camp and involved in the purchase and sale of that property. In doing our due diligence, I was able to walk the island with Tom Falcon, the realtor of Maxfield Real Estate who represented the Winchester family, as well as research and discuss the historical, archaeological, archaeological and wildlife habitat importance to the island. Farm Island is a rare resource on Lake Winnipesaukee. Not only is it one of the very few islands over ten acres that is only a single dwelling, but it's surviving historic and cultural resources, including an early twentieth-century cottage with associated outbuildings and a late nineteenth-century stone foundation likely used by sheltering sheep and continued to convey agricultural and early summer resident in that area. Periods that define much of the history of Tuftonborough and the Lakes region. Farm Island retains a cultural landscape that includes significant resources from both its agricultural and early summer tourism uses. In two thousand ten, when I surveyed the property, the nineteen oh six cottage that under, that had undergone virtually no alterations, in fact, lacked electricity and running water. And the power lines at that time did not go across the bay. We used those power lines back when I was a camper and a leader. That was the closest extent where the boys were using boats and canoes in that bay, they couldn't go under the power lines or past them. The only other standing structure were typical outbuildings that accompanied a summer house and this carrow, all built within a few years of the cottage. We at Camp Belknap, the owner since two thousand ten of seven and a half acres of budding the Winchester property, have witnessed no activity since two thousand ten. Thus, the island remains much as it was for more than one hundred years. As such, it is highly unique historical, cultural resource within the town of Tuftonborough and on Lake Winnipesaukee. Farm Island's historical significance and high level of integrity of location, design, materials, setting, workmanship, feeling and association make it eligible for the State Register of Historic Places. The property also has strong potential for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The island's early twentieth-century cottage and boat shed retain architectural integrity and are representative of cottages erected in this initial phase of summer residence based on photographs posted on the realtor's website. There is also a well-preserved stone foundation that was likely a sheep pen or other agricultural building erected and used during the island's era of summer pasturing, a typical land use for islands of this size in the nineteenth century. Unlike the, the lake's larger islands such as Bear Island, Farm Island was not large enough to support a farm. Stone for this foundation was quarried on the site. The foundation located close by the former natural land bridge that would have provided an easy crossing for animals is also located in the sheltered southeast side of the island. I'm going to now, a couple more minutes, I'm going to now read from the Tuftonborough Master Plan, chapter five, under land use. And I quote, "Development and land use are among the most important and controversial concerns of community planning. In the past, individual landowners made most decisions about Tuftonborough's villages and rural landscape. These decisions have been and have become a legitimate public concern because they affect neighboring properties and property values, public services and facilities, environmental health, public safety, the ability of finite resources, economic opportunity and overall quality of life in Tuftonborough. With the impacts of the recent growth in population, the community must actively guide the town's development. The changes to balance the interest of the community with those of the individual landowner, close quote." One more quote from the five-point-one Historic Developments. "Historic settlement patterns dating from the town's founding established a framework for present growth and development. A variety of cultural landscape features, including historic settlements, sites and structures, mark progressive stages in the town's development and today remain relatively intact. These resources provide a critical link to the past and contribute much to the town's rural character, sense of place and community identity, close quote. We must adhere to the Tuftonborough Master Plan. We must do, as the Master Plan states, quote, 'continue to provide a link to the past and contribute to the sense of place and community identity,' close quote. The preservation of Farm Island from development does just that. In my perspective, it is unforgivable to allow a subdivision on possibly the only island on Lake Winnipesaukee that so vibrantly articulates the nineteenth and twentieth-century history of Tuftonborough and the lake. We should preserve Farm Island, have it listed on the state and federal registers of historic places and be proud that we are being good stewards of our history, culture, natural resources for generations to come." Thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Fries, my husband's Steve Banks, and we own a property at forty-three Rocky Point Road in Tuftonborough, and we've owned that since two thousand one. And we looked at that property, I'm from, my, my, I grew up in Offy Bay or suffered in Offy Bay, which got very busy over the years. And when we looked at this property, the thing we absolutely loved about it was the bay was so quiet and the island, I mean, none of this background about the island, but I personally, going around that island on my kayak is just so special. And one time when I went around in this area that is shallow, a whole herd of deer ran across to, from the island, you know, to the mainland. It was really quite a sight to see. So, I, to minimize the special nature of this island is beyond words. But I am here to, if you wouldn't mind me reading this petition that over three hundred and fifty people have signed. I happened to get several signatures and really heard a lot of concerns and love for this island, this area from the people. So, I'll do my best to read it and if there's anybody here that wants to sign part of the petition that I didn't get to or someone else didn't get to, you're welcome to. "We, the unentsigned, request the Tuftonborough Planning Board to decline the subdivision application for David Donald and John Winchester. Taps map forty, lot two dash one, one, Farm Island. Tuftonborough submitted by CNR, New Hampshire Real Trust LLC for a twelve parcel subdivision. Farm Island is presently owned by Camp Belknap, seven point five acres, and the Winchester family, thirteen point three acres. The Camp Belknap portion of the island is currently used only as an overnight camping site for the campers. The camping is conservation-friendly with a leave-no-trace policy and no power equipment. There is no impact on the surrounding area. The Winchester portion of the island, which consists of two-thirds of the island, is uninhabited. The proposed twelve-block subdivision by sea and arid reality will create a major change to the island. We have the following concerns regarding the development of Farm Island. The increase in boat traffic on Nineteen Mile Bay. The impact on water quality on Nineteen Mile Bay. The impact on the loon population. The archaeological impact, artifacts on the island. Loss of and historic preservation of the last original island farm on the lake. Increase in mainland traffic and parking. Impact on dock availability on mainland. Shoreline protection disturbances. Impact of twelve septic systems on the quality, water quality. Impact to town beach. The erosion, site pollution, noise, safety of swimmers and kayakers. Increase in the use of public ramp. Overburning the existing easement for electrical power and flood hazard zone impacts. In order for the planning board to conduct the appropriate review of the twelve parcel subdivision on Farm Island, the following needs to be done. Environmental impacts, is an alteration, terrain permit required? Shoreline protection impacts? Wetland impacts? Septic system impacts? Army Corps of Engineers reviews? Is a federal one oh six review under the National Historic Preservation Act required? Boat traffic study of Nineteen Mile Bay? Increased traffic, impact on safety of kayakers, swimmers, et cetera? Impact on loons? Mainland study traffics? Increased traffic, parking? Impact on abutters? Camp Belknap? Camp Belknap uses Farm Island for camping experiences for campers? Will the camp be able to continue using Farm Island if there are twelve new residences on the island? Liability and safety concern for campers? Safety of campers on?" Safety of campers on the island? Safety of campers in water? Light and noise pollution? Impact on residents of Chase Island and 19 Mile Bay? Safety in water for swimmer and kayakers? Light and noise pollution? Boat traffic? Potential impacts on lake quality of life? Public walking tour of island prior to approval? And I also want to add that I actually had three boys, well, I had about three boys, that went to Camp Bellnap for years, loved Camp Bellnap. And I love watching, I'm not a camp, I'm not trying to, I just love watching the boys kayak around Camp Bellnap, watching aspects. I think Camp Bellnap is a very important part of our 19 Mile Bay. And it's a great community and preserve the land, and I'm really concerned about the safety of the boys. So, thank you, and I will give you this. If there's anybody else?
Very quickly, I just want to add something before I quit. We did receive a total of nine letters as well from different people. And as required, I just need to recognize that we received them. I do not have to read them all, according to Justin, and in the interest of the current heat, I believe we can all agree with that. But we did receive letters from Russ Wrigley, Christine Hanscom, Victoria Seletzky, Nick Moore, Richard Stone, John Cooley from the Loon Preservation Committee, from the Curtains, Horrins and Diorios. Yes?
Hi, I'm Karen Hamelstein. Well, first of all, about the loons and the deer. I swim that island, I kayak that island, I paddleboard that island, and believe me, there are loons all over. There's a beach attached to 17 New Leavers Island. The loons have come up and the baby loons have swam between our legs. You have to be, I mean, it was incredible, I can't even explain the experience. They're around, they swim under you, they're like torpedoes, believe me. You get a very rare, when you're swimming a mile around the island, it's a very rare perspective. They're there and they certainly would be impacted by 12 loons. Also, as far as the deer, I just happened to be videotaping one, you know, right in front of our yard, who actually was scared off, comes in, I see them go in through the beach or on the rocky shore, coming back and forth from the island all the time. Last year, we were fortunate enough to see a mother and the two babies swimming in a triangular formation. You know, unfortunately, I couldn't get my phone out and videotape it fast enough, but my friends did. So, I can't imagine having all these lots would not impact the wildlife and the lake life around. Also, regarding the light and noise pollution, I mean, I have to say, you know, I'm all for, you know, new construction and everything else, you just don't know who the buyers are going to be and what they're going to do. So, it could make a significant impact, having this amount of houses on the lake with the light thing. I mean, yes, it would impact me, yes, but I feel like I respect, I feel like all my neighbors are very respectful, whether you have old camps, you know, that were built back in the 1940s or new construction. I just, I can't, I guess it just sort of is, excuse my language, a crapshoot as to what the buyers of each subdivision are going to build and what they're going to, you know, have tons of spotlights and, you know, light on 24/7, who knows? I just want to tell you my two cents. And it certainly will impact everything.
First of all, thank you very much, because I know you're a volunteer board and thanks for holding us, for us to have a chance to speak. And I'll make it really quick. I've been coming up for 64 years, and yes, the eagles are coming back, and yes, the loons are coming back. But they are coming back because people in the 1970s that were on local boards or state boards or working at the federal level had the vision to figure out how these animals and people can coexist. And to me, that's, I've read your mission statement, which really speaks to the challenge that you have of finding a balance with all the constituents that you've served in Tuftonborough. But I'm here for the furry fuzzy constituents that can't come, and of course, it's going to have an impact. You look around that bay, that's the only shoreline. That's the way it is. And that, if we look 10 years from now and we see that that has been protected somehow, then there is balance. There's public concerts, there's a public boat ramp, there are cottages, there are big new homes, but there's also one strip of shoreline for those creatures. Thank you.
Carrie Hunt, I live 27 Durbin Road. I'm here as a year-round resident and a parent of two young children in the community, and I want to speak a little bit specifically to the safety, especially what you had referenced a few minutes ago. I know we referenced that it was only going to be potentially 12 lots, that what impact would that have in terms of increase in boat traffic, include increase in automobile traffic? I do still have concerns with that. I do think that the increase in boat traffic as a form of lifeguard, our town beaches, town swim lessons, town swim team utilize that beach on a daily basis, 12 more boats moving in and out could definitely impact that tremendously. I want to talk a little bit about the parking that we've said, there's ample parking in that area. Just tonight, majority of you probably drove by Pier 19 Beach. I was driving 10 miles an hour, very slowly, because there were boats, cars and trailers all over the place because of that beach concert. There is not ample parking there whatsoever. There are many of the young community members here who ride their bikes straight down Union Morph Road to that beach, spend a lot of time, spend, and summer there. Our schools provide lunches sometimes at that beach for kids that do need to travel there to get food throughout the summer. So, there are a lot of our younger kids that utilize that all the time, and I do have concerns tremendously about the safety with this impact with that.
My name is Frank, last year I lived in 19 Mile Bay. I'm chasing to the town beach. I have been there since I got out of the military in 1966, and I own property of theirs since 1942. Couple of things I want to set straight. Number one, the power line feeding that island is no longer in use. It comes off north of 21 Haver Lake Road and Winnie Shores, and it goes to the island aerial, and from that point, there's a disconnect and it goes to the main house. Dean Winchester was adamant, and I don't believe there is a right of way or an easement, that he would maintain that power line. He did not want White Mountain power on his ladder. So, he overtook, used to come down to my house when I was working for the phone company and asked me to use like here to be able to get the lines back up and climb the poles and get service to a single house at the top of the island. Number two, as far as, there are no loons there anymore. I have had loons on that island ever since I can remember. They were in there last year, they're in there this year. This year, they get driven off by, I don't know, I think it may have, maybe boats ramping up there. They have been in there, and they've probably come through there, that same couple, but they're not, they had not bred this year. Last year, they were in there, and they bred one, and unfortunately, it was grabbed by an eagle. The year before that, there were twins up there, and they were taken by, one was taken by eagle, and the other one survived, was able to leave in October. So, there are still active loon nesting areas on that island, essentially in this area and perhaps over here or here out of the wind. That's a big problem. Now, I'll get back to my statement here, we wish to make file for the public record about this proposal. Let me say that we are not making any objections to the Winchester family's right to sell the island. They have held for so many years and maintained without developing. Their willingness to keep this island in its natural state has been appreciated and respected by the 19 Mile Bay families for these many years. Our objection is the dramatic change from current use conservation area to a 12-bake subdivision. We want to share with the board why we believe this is not the time for such a change in use and file item. My wife and I have participated with UNH Lake Lake monitoring program for 23 years. During the summer months, we collect water samples from 19 Mile Bay sites A and B referenced on that handout, and the purpose of this voluntary water quality monitoring is to assist the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Service and UNH Fresh Water Biology Group to collect samples and record data. This information is available from both New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and UNH. But let me provide a quick look at what the data and information is available. Document one, sampling sites, average water quality. You'll notice that 19 Mile Bay Site A, which is essentially the direct center of the bay, and B, which is right halfway between Camp Bellnap and Camp Bellnap's Farm Island property, at 13.5 feet and 15.1 feet clarity is less clear than 20 Mile Bay at 18 feet, and the museum at 24.3 foot clarity. The second page of the document shows the sampling highlights, and the dissolved oxygen is shown in red for ethotropic. Water transparency chlorophyll is shown in blue, excellent, overly atrophic. The total fox is shown in blue as well at 10.9, and one from yellow equal fair is mesiotropic. These stations are identified with appropriate numbers for further research. The 12-bake subdivision in development with 12 new septic systems are closely located from each to the other on 12-bakes. And 19 Mile Bay can only accelerate the degradation of our water quality in the bay. Document two shows the area with the Tuftonborough mill foil presence. Chemovertreatment has occurred at 19 Mile Bay Marina at least twice in my knowledge. With an addition of at least 12 boats and docks and the use of barges during the building and development phase for a potential existing mill foil spread is concerned. The disruption of mill foil, no matter how small, and I'm a certified weed puller, no matter how small, there's an extremely cautious to pull this stuff up, will cause spreading of mill foil according to Amish McGill or DES inspector. Just a little leaf of that loose will find its place on other place and start a roof. There are two areas on Farm Island that have been identified as eligible for handpicking of mill foil because it's not as intense as the other areas such as the basin and Pier 19 Marina. At Communications and Lake Winnipesaukee Association, October 2018, Moltenboro Bay and Winter Harbor Watership Management Plan indicate perceived impairments and problems in the watershed. Note Public Beach under one and see Item Six. Are there any threats to the future conditions such as accelerated development patents? Certainly, this 12-bake subdivision on Farm Island is perceived threat. The survey of the watershed and field reconnaissance has started and is currently ongoing as recent as this week. Site-specific project plan of Moltenboro Bay and Winter Harbor Watershed Management Plan under the New Hampshire Nonpoint Source Grant Program, 2018. Page six regarding the concern and potential threat to the bay from the rapid infiltration wastewater disposal system located in Wolf Row just over the Tuftonborough Line, 17-mile stretch of 19 Mile Bay outlets into 19 Mile Brook, outlets into 19 Mile Bay, could be affected after spoke failures and groundwater seeps discovered within six weeks of this initial operation. Again, this is an ongoing study, not yet complete. Document five, due order selection meeting, February 4, 2009, appointment, Normandow Associates to study the impact of 19 Mile Brook as a result of the town of Wolf Row's operation of the RID discharge. This study is not yet complete. Document six, Normandow Associates, 19 Mile Brook Watershed Bureau Environmental Assessment Project Number 24254.000, copied and filed special attention on page 15, 19 Mile Brook, since 2019, indirectly received nearly all of the Wolf Row rapid infiltration facility wastewater discharge through the groundwater infiltration and chasing to the Brook. Document number seven, town beach redesign worksheet and article from the Tuftonborough Times, winter of 2019. Design of work to be started at the town beach in 19 Mile Bay to improve the drainage and erosion problems that have been ongoing in the public beach. A new perch beach and retaining wall is proposed. All these ongoing environmental studies and work at the 19 Mile Bay area along with continued water monitoring by areas engineering that has been taking place, a number of monitoring wells since 2000 for PCE contaminants, PCE contaminants released as a result of a fire in 1989 from a plastic bag printing business. Four families on Bay Road have lost their wells, and since 2002, water isn't provided by effective levels. We urge you not to approve the subdivision development until all of these ongoing studies are completed. The Planning Board, developer, 19 Mile Bay, and area property owners and residents, town beach funders involved in the entire town of Tuftonborough, need and deserve to have these reports and recommendations prior to your approval of this subdivision. We submit this to the planning board. How many more impacts of that bay can it tolerate before the water goes terrible? We have not even mentioned cyanobacteria examinations yet. The Duane and Wolf Row, it's a natural and unnatural occurrence that comes from the bottom as the waters of the substrator is disturbed. That is a hazard that Merrill Lake experienced with blue cyanobacteria, and they have to rectify that. Is the town in a position to invoke those kinds of expenses down the road to mitigate cyanobacteria as something other than mention? Thank you.
How's everybody doing? We need a ressource or name it out?
Yeah, we're saying, we're saying. All right. That's my bedtime. Gone with the quarter, built house for Paul Johnson, I live on 10 Mile Chase Point. So, I'm on the lake, I'm as close as anybody to the subdivision, and everybody's against it, it's in the room except for me. I just have a lot of faith in the zoning regulations in the town of Tuftonborough. I think they address everybody's concerns. I spoke with Randy and Cindy personally, and they've reassured me that their intent is not to blast a 12-lot subdivision in there, or actually buy it for their own personal You can take a long word or not, but my feeling is that the state of New Hampshire, the subcircles, you know, the septic to the sole province of the state of New Hampshire, the regulations have stood the test of time. F1 passes 12 inches away from the leach field, and it's clean. I just think the language do their job according to the regulations. I just think the land would do their job according to the regulations in town. Would I rather have it not subject but not developed? I show but I can't ask somebody, as long as they meet the regulations, both state and local, why shouldn't they be allowed to develop it? Most of the people in this room have sure some property that they use and enjoy. And I think everybody in this room had an opportunity to purchase that property, including camp. And they didn't. So I think a third party is great to mediate any questions about lake levels and surveys and that's above my pay grade. So anyway, thank you very much.
Matt, Bill, Gary, Tony, Laura, Kate, thank you for your time tonight, first of all. And as Representative Camp Belknap, I live at one Chase Point Road, year round. And I just want to give a little bit of perspective of Belknap and a request to the planning board. We've been in our location since 1907. We were founded in 1903, started on the other side of the lake. We've grown from seventeen acres to 300 acres over time. In that same time, we've gone from less than five abutters to over 50 abutters. We are not against having neighbors. And many of the folks living or in this room right now are abutters. Just as a background, we have 1,100 boys a summer, about 275 or 25% of them are from New Hampshire, and about 12% of the Tuftonboro boys who are of camper age actually attend a Belknap. 10% of our campers get full ride scholarships and most of those are from Carroll County. Camper safety is and always has been our top priority. And we manage risks with great intention, as many of you know, and that allows our boys to enjoy the lake. For most of these boys, this is their only lake experience, two weeks at camp. Our request to the planning board is the following: that the planning board consider this proposed subdivision as having a regional impact. You heard a lot of facts tonight. A lot of professionals spoke on a lot of different dynamics. And a development like this requires regional planning commission review as well as notice and review by those towns which may be impacted by this proposed subdivision and not just the town planning board decision. We believe this has a regional impact for the following reasons. There's seven of them. The first is water quality. I think Fran just spoke in much more detail than I could on that. And this water interacts with every town around this lake, which creates a regional aspect. Traffic and parking concerns, it's not just for us town, but that's a state highway. It connects all the towns and is also the main commerce thoroughfare in the town. Many people use nineteen mile bay and not just Tuftonboro residents to access the lake. So it's a regional impact in that way. The fourth, which was spoken to earlier, is the negative impacts on historical or cultural resources. The fifth is that the existing land, butts land that's being conserved and will fragment fragile lakefront habitat. That's a line almost straight from the state's regional impact, what defines potential regional impact. There's not been a subdivision that I'm aware of on the lake, on an island, since sometime in the late seventies. To my understanding, that was, I believe, Rattlesnake. So it seems like a great burden, to be honest, on the group of you sitting here, the volunteers, to determine the best practices on island development. When I do believe there are regional planning boards and various state review boards that would most likely have experience and provide additional support and consideration to review this project. I urge you to use those state resources to help define how this should be managed. Finally, I think with rapid infiltration basin, this potential subdivision, and Pier Nineteen store and the future fate of that, there's a lot all coming together at once. I urge the planning board to look at how this all connects together. I think the magnitude of this development needs to be recognized. These homes are 40 by 30 homes. That's a footprint. You could double that in size. Those are large houses, not just cottages. The last 20 cottages to sell on average are about 1,300 square feet. This will be more than double that. I guess most importantly is, no matter what decisions are made, take the time you need to make sure that the decision is outlined clearly, so that all parties involved are informed of all expectations. Most importantly, I want to reduce any chance of conflict later. I know you do as well. I also want to just make sure we reduce confusion and you have my word as the Representative Camp Belknap to work with you in any way you need as you work through this as the abutter. I think our bay's fate is at a crossroads. I live here, in the fall, as camp slows down, I go over to the bay. My boys swim there every morning in the swim team. This is our home, it's all of our homes, it's the future buyers of homes as well. Everyone who is here or is going to be here wants to protect it. And I urge you to make sure that the value of this whole bay that everyone cherishes gets a due justice and a due regional impact and review at the state level. Thank you.
I live at a Chase Point Road and have lived there for the last 32 years. I found, built our house and I've watched other properties being built on the lake over that time. And as has clearly been evidenced by all the comments today, there are extra challenges to lakefront construction on hold, but certainly those are far more complex on undeveloped islands than would be on an island where already had facilities available or on the mainland. I certainly understand the challenges that you face in this decision-making process. I reviewed the Tuftonboro master plan that is posted on the town website with its guiding principles, which includes, I quote, "Enhancing the natural landscape of water, forests, hillsides, and protection of the natural systems that maintain clean water, clean air, and natural wildlife." In section 5.6 and chapter 5 on future use, the guidelines suggest that the least accessible and most fragile areas be undeveloped. Certainly, this should apply to a pristine uninhabited island. Section 5.6.2, which discusses planning considerations for the island's conservation district, of which Farm Island is a part, states, "The planning board may want to explore the possibility of expanding the regulations to better protect water quality, shoreline vegetation, and wildlife activity that address stormwater and erosion to prevent sediment, fertilizers and pesticides from entering surface and groundwater during construction as well as post-construction." I feel the planning board should follow these suggestions in the master plan and reexamine if the Farm Island project should at the very least require an intention of existing regulation for safety of this pristine area. The development of a subdivision is a relatively lengthy process where the creation of infrastructure precedes the whole building process. And we've heard that there are all these various permits that need to be gotten at various stages. The process is going to be far more complex on an island than on the mainland and if delayed or if left uncompleted due to unforeseen factors could be very harmful to nineteen mile bay's environment. I'm not aware from reviewing the master plan of any body requirements for projects in the document, given the complexity of this project and the potential for the unexpected to occur. I hope that the planning board would require surety bonds for the project to ensure the safety of the environment and the habitat and water quality for what would be the first island to develop on the entire lake in many decades. I really thank you for that.
Just let me address something quickly, just because it may answer some questions that people have. Whenever there is a subdivision and there are improvements such as utilities, say for instance, it's the case of this, then in every subdivision we've ever done, we request the applicant to post a surety or bond for those improvements. So with that, yes?
Attorney Mr. Elliott, Pier Nineteen Condominium Association votes for the owner and eight count. Earlier, Attorney Sullivan made mention of the fact that this was not going to make a major impact to the bay based on 12 homes having 12 individual boat slips in front of houses and that there's 11 boat slips available for sale in the area. I just want to make sure that nobody's including the Pier Nineteen Condominium Association in that count of boat slips for sale. There are no boat slips for sale in Pier Nineteen and there won't be any boat slips for sale. Just want to make sure that nobody's thinking that that north dock is available for sale to support the building on site and it's not.
Are you saying that a member of the Sullivan's?
Oh, any individual, there's none for sale right now. He said there's 11 for sale right now. So I don't know what, he might have 11 somewhere else. They're not in Pier Nineteen. Okay, it just happens to be that the north dock is 11 docks. I wanted clarification for the board here to know that those, if that's his 11, they're not our 11.
Okay, but just for clarity, a member of Pier Nineteen Docking Association, Condominium Association, is trying to supplement?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. My name is Don Berry. I'm the president of the White Street Conservation Trust, also a property owner of the area in town. As some of you in the audience know, LRCT has a mission of land conservation and stewardship. We protect land through ownership of land through conservation easements. It's beyond our mission to come and comment and object to a particular development proposal on some other owner's land, but I do want to say that as the owner of other property on the lake and holder of conservation easement on some other land on the lake, we certainly appreciate the significant conservation values of this property and want people to know that if, as this review of this project continues, if conservation turns out to be part of the future of this property, we certainly are available to be of assistance in whatever way is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Matt Johnson. I'm the attorney. I represent YMCA Camp Belknap. I'll be brief, most of the things have been touched on. I just want to go back to the issue over that was talked about at the very beginning of the night about the utility. Utilities, because I think the issue is very much a status for the application is premature for a couple of reasons. First of all, there's been a lot of testimony that the line may not be sufficient. I know under subdivision reg, you're supposed to get feedback from the power company. I'm not aware of any feedback from the power company whether this can work or not. And then once even it were to work, how it was going to expand out onto the island. If in fact it has to be changed or modified anyway, given the depth in the bay, there very well could be dredging and filling. So very much the Army Corps of Engineers could be involved. There was testimony before suggesting maybe there wouldn't be, but I would represent that if in fact you have to do the dredging and filling, that is going to be an issue. And I think more study needs to be done on the front end to know what that is. And secondarily, the study needs to be done because that's really probably for this type of development going to guide the financial guarantees that are going to be necessary. This is a major subdivision on an island. I'm not aware of the applicant having really any background in the development of this. Applicant has had a checkered financial pass relative to some bankruptcy filings previously. Again, everyone's entitled to a fresh start, but there's been testimony earlier about the challenges when you start a project and then can't complete a project. So I would encourage the planning board to take the time, make sure that if in fact it could be approved, there is the backing and ability to complete the infrastructure, complete the utilities and not have a half-started project. Because even with the surety or a bond, it's very much a mess of a situation. Please.
Again, just to clarify, part of that, planning board will generally require a cost estimate for improvements to utilities as well as construction observation agreements for what happens, so as well as post-. With that, next up? Anyone? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Frank Henderson. I'm from Concord, New Hampshire. And I drove up tonight because I wanted just to submit to the board an op-ed piece that appeared in the Concord Monitor. And it summarizes pretty much most of what's been said tonight, but I should be in for the record.
Anyone else?
Chief, I'm Teresa Bosner. I'm from New Hampshire, submitting. I'm representing the Hampshire Preservation Line with the statewide organization for preservation of historic properties. Their concern, as you can imagine, is Farm Island, the geography, the environment, the natural resources, the historic nature of the agricultural history, is they believe eligible or inadequate state legislature of the National Historic Preservation.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I wanted to address the audience and Randy and Cindy Pratt. What we have here is not just, and forgive me if I'm not a public speaker, I didn't plan any remarks, hadn't come prepared, so the butterflies may just silence me. We have here not just another development. We have something that in the minds of these people is very special. In our minds, to see this develop is probably akin to seeing lots sold in Yellowstone or condos on Strawberry Bank or Paul Revere's house. It just means that much to so many people. But you have a bay which, in the eyes of many, is already overburdened. Now we're going to add a tax of 12 new homes at some point. But you've got a tough, tough situation here. If you look at the parties involved, you've got the Winchesters have been trying to sell this for years. Price keeps coming down and down and down. Finally, they got a buyer, Mr. Andy Owens and Cindy, and they've put some money into this thing. They've got some engineering costs that they put in, that they put in in good faith. You've got the community that really does not want to see this develop because it is so special. You've got the camp who has tried to preserve it and would like to see it preserved, and you've got the squatters, the wildlife, who have taken residence there in the past many decades. And yes, I'm sure there's an eagle there. Three times this spring, I was there right around ice out and I saw them swoop down, grab something out of the water, and they headed right to the far side of the island. I wouldn't trespass, but I do believe there probably is a nest over there. But it's not just the eagles. I've seen this spring otter come off the island and swim past my dock. Bear, deer, loons, you name it, they use it. So how do we resolve this dilemma? And I think this is why I did want to speak, because we have so many abutters here. I think it's clear that we'd like to see it preserved as it is. But how do you make Mr. Owens whole if he's got all this money spent on engineering plans to get to this point? I would like to ask the abutters, I'd like to ask the neighborhood. If the plan were not to go through, if someone were to be sort of nice and say, "I'll back away," I can see that, you know, developing any land has always got risk, is delays. But I, as a businessman, investor, would never want to try to develop this island because the risk is just so high. Would the neighbors be willing? Would the neighbors be willing to pass the proverbial hat and help make this developer whole if we were to walk away and leave a vacancy so another buyer could come in? And maybe in return for passing that hat, a conservation easement is put on that island. So I asked the neighbors, I asked the abutters, "If someone were to come knocking on your door looking for a donation, would you be willing to put your money where your heart is?" Can I see a raise of hands? So I think what the community says is, "We don't need development. We need a steward for that island." And I'll be the one to pass the hat if we could work something out between the parties to see it preserved indefinitely and that no one walks away leaving a lot of money on the table and feeling burned by the experience. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
My name is Judy Kerr. I've lived on, at twenty-two Winnebago's for twenty-one years. And I was just a little concerned at the beginning when they spoke about speaking to the loon preservation committee. Probably four or five years ago, I had an over-the-summer conversation with John about the fact that there were baby loons in our cove. They were nursing in that little cove over there. Which, by the way, a couple of years ago, they put up a sign saying, "Please stay out, loon nesting here."
That's right.
So they're certainly aware of the fact that the loons nest there. And he was concerned about that. And he said at the time, they didn't have the staff to monitor the loons in our cove, which is why over a period of a couple of years, he and I spoke on a regular basis about the status of the babies that were in the bay. So that's, that's just one little thing that I wanted to point out. And that they've actually had signs there that the loons were nesting in that.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Rich Mongeau. I live on Chase Island for thirty-seven years. And I checked a little here for the man who says, "The water is clean. One and a half feet clean." Any system there, I'll get some volunteers. I'm glad you threw you a glass and you can prove that to me. And I say that in light of what happened with Wolfboro, Lincoln Wild Brook. But that is another issue. I just hope, I'm not for stopping the development on the island. Hoping that it's in your power and it may not be to limit perhaps for the sake of conservation and things like that. I'm not sure what's happening with the center of the island because it's a thirteen-lot division. Twelve buildable lots that the center is going to remain. There is a house on it and it was referenced that it was going to stay there. So I don't know what's going to happen with that. But I do hope that whatever development that goes on in there, perhaps you take some of that tax money and increase the size of back-to-tent parking lot because that is beyond its carrying capacity now. It's just, you know, not for any other reason than more people.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question. I just want, I just want to look at like, think about, do you want to live in an area, you know, like, up in Loon's Mill with the wildlife and the bees are quiet or do you want to live at Weir's Beach? Because we don't know what's going to happen with the store. There's already a lot of building around the area. There's huge big mansions on the mainland shore going up towards Twenty Mile Bay. And we have very little free land there for the animals. So once the houses go in, the people come in, there's no road to the animals. So it's your choice, you know, Loon's Mill or Weir's Beach.
I just have a question for the board. On the last seat, I favor, about getting to the cargo. Now, my understanding is this is a development that is going to be on the mainland, that the planning board would require two off-road parking on the lots. And if that's the case, is the town going to allow twelve cars, minimum, maybe twenty-four, to use what is considered temporary parking at Nineteen Mile Bay? Or would the town, if they approve it, are they willing to make the parking lot bigger so that the developer then can provide parking? So I'm not clear.
It's actually an interesting question. It's a question we've never run, you know, obviously run into before because we've never had a large island subdivision. So when we do a subdivision on land, you know, you can look at it both ways. We don't require an applicant to prove that they have any place to start from with their contract, you know, when they do. When we do an application on water, it's a little different. So one of the things the board, you know, has thought about and is deliberating with ourselves is how to treat that. So most island customers, I speak for more experienced than most people do, most island customers tend to have their boats slipped at either a dock they own, at a marina, at a river landing, at Pickpoint. No one goes to Miami and Rosewood. One of those places, Land's End Marina. So as far as what the impact of the, you know, actual parking area on Pier nineteen, I mean, if I was to take a guess, the majority of cars you see parked there on a weekend are not island customers, but people out who are off the water who recreate on the lake. That's not to say that would never happen to an island customer. I think it's particularly in the spring or the fall where they're pulling their boats in the water or out of the water. But it's an interesting question and it's one we've never run into. Just, we have thought about it. Yes?
Jim Ryan's from White Moon Servic and Engineering again. Just one point for the board. If this were on the land, you know, in your subdivision regulations, you'd have the right for a land development to do a traffic impact study and an economic impact study, environmental impact study. So those sorts of tools are available to you and for a unique situation like this that you don't see routinely. And with the environmental concerns that have been raised, I mean, you could, you could ask for a parking study or, you know, something along that lines of what's going to happen there. I don't have the means or the knowledge to do it, but I'm sure there's somebody out there that does.
I don't know who you would want to do that one. That'd be interesting.
That's what Googles. But, you know, clearly, environmental studies could be done. Hydrogeologic studies, you know, when you, when you look at densities, typically the land density for DES requirements, that's been empirically derived nationwide, not just in New Hampshire. And because there's safety factors associated with that and there's contiguity to the land, it's not as much of an issue as it is on an island where now you're, they're pressing the envelope, I believe they've exceeded the envelope for the, for the number of lots using the lot sizing that the state has. But there's no safety factor at all because the lake is, is the boundary. So I think that it's something that the board could consider.
I think you bring up a valid point. There's many things for us to consider. The board, as you know, is somewhat confined on how far we press it by government hand, which is going to limit, you know. We can't make them go through hoops that are far above what we would ask of other applicants. So we have to be consistent in the application of this only to all applicants and everyone is treated fairly and sufficiently treated.
It's a unique, it's a unique situation.
It's a very unique one. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. With that, we have a great deal of information from us. There are certainly some things that I think the applicant should look at. You know, the survey questions, a lot of this, you know, obviously, this sort of stuff is subject to this. While I can't speak to the entire board, I obviously think there's some things on utilities that need to be tightened up as far as, you know, you're going to have to have a co-op. We're going to have to make sure that we have clean station system power to look at the side. You know, there's going to be some engineering, easements. There's, there's some things to cover there. So let me just make sure I'm doing this legally correct, right? And continue to a date certain? We're going to continue to a date, I need a motion to continue to a date certain of August first, same place, same time. Oh, I'm sorry. We reserved Tuckinboro Elementary School so that we would have more space. It is not our. And just so everyone knows, we did attempt to have the school, but due to noticing requirements, we were on the way to switching to the school. And, yeah, no, we're going to leave the public hearing open. And one other comment, we do have, if anyone's parked on the road out there before we leave, we do have fire department and police here. And Adam will make a decision just on directing traffic and making sure anyone's safety is coming out. And Adam is the tall, handsome gentleman with the Tuckinboro Elementary. So with that, can I have a motion to continue to a date certain of August first at the Tuckinboro Central School at Seven? Is that good?